Matt Wilson to come and open us up in prayer, so Matt, if you would come.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, this gathering. God, we all need your wisdom, no matter what position we hold, so Father, we ask you today, Lord, that these leaders, God, that they would listen to you and your Holy Spirit, Father, and God, you'd help us all to complete our goal in life and our purpose, in Jesus' name, amen.
I post flag salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting today. Good to see this good number out. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from the last?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the minutes.
Go move.
Second.
We already had a motion, so.
Okay, Johnny's second.
Johnny's second. All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carried. Ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 2017-24 declaring certain Recreation Department air conditioner items as surplus.
Greg mentioned this a moment ago. He had the chiller replaced that we've talked about for a couple of years now. Scrounge value of that thing is approximately $700 to $800. He had an offer from a company called Industrial Solutions to purchase it for $2,200.
Good job.
I'd like to motion with the clerk, sir.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next is resolution 2017-25 authorizing an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation to make improvements and extensions to Eccles Drive. Got a motion and a second.
Now, is this, how much is the state? Are they gonna pay for all the upgrade on that, or how much? They put a dollar figure on it, or?
All but the engineering, they'll put on the top. Engineering's second.
The state is gonna do everything but the engineering. Do you get a second?
Yeah, we got a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, resolution 2017-26, accepting low bid for the landfill scraper pan repair.
Bid, we sent out bids April 19th. They were due in yesterday. Sent out three bids, only got one response. That one response was from Thompson Tractor Company for $16,470.
It's my understanding that we award the bid today, then it should be repaired within 30 days, and I make a motion to.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in, any, all in favor, say aye. My tongue tied up here.
Anybody else too?
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right. Resolution 2017-27, accepting low bid for the plant mix and binder.
Again, bids were mailed out on April 19th, due in yesterday. Three bids, sent out, only one response. That response was from Wired Grass. $55.95 per ton for binder, $59.95 for plant mix. That's 70 cents a ton greater than last year.
What was the binder?
$55.95.
And that's also 70?
Yeah, both of them were 70 cents more per ton this year than last year.
Is that about the going price, Tim?
Sir?
Is that about the correct price?
Yeah, it was 62, four years ago. It's been coming down since then.
I think it's down because of fuel prices, but I think that's our best bet as far as hauling and everything. I make a motion to accept this bid.
Second.
Yeah, but it's closer also. It's only bid and they're pretty close. Make a motion.
Got a motion to accept and a second.
There's nothing about this bid that requires us to buy it there if he finds a better price. They just agreed to be bound to set.
Bound by the price. Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carried. A new business discuss about replacing the air conditioning unit at the senior center building.
I was approached, oh, about a month ago, by Craig Sheldon from the Cab County Commission's office. We have an agreement with the county. We own the senior building, but they maintain it. And there was some ambiguity in the language of the contract. Rocky and I looked at it about what entails upkeep and maintenance. Craig said it's beyond maintenance, that it needed to be replaced, and he brought a quote from Bryant's Heating and Cooling, which I included in your packet. Rocky's looked at it, and we're of the opinion, we don't even have a contract with them. It's expired in '09, I believe, wasn't it, Rocky?
Somewhere around that time, yes, but at this point, it's just, it's sort of, my law renews once a year because we keep accepting the dollar if they actually send it, and they keep maintaining it.
Utilities are paid by who?
Them.
They're paying the utility.
Well, what our out-of-pocket cost is on that building is carrying on our insurance roll.
Now, what that roughly costs a year?
I haven't broke it out. Have to go into the policy and break out that individual piece, but.
Basically, we don't, as I understand it, we don't use the building at all, with the exception of holding city elections there.
And how much is the, a six?
He's got a quote in here from Bryant's for two different units. He's got a Lennox and a Dicke. Both of them $86.95, but I'm sure if we're gonna replace the air conditioner, we'll wanna get our own quote.
I see no reason, since we don't use it, I see no reason why we need to own it. I don't, I think we'll just give it to the county and let them do what they want to do.
How did the city come about owning that building?
I don't know. It predates me, and there's not much in this world that does. But, but it does, and.
Three-way joint venture to start with. City built.
I think, yeah, the city built it, and we were, we had some use of it, and then the senior center was there, and then whatever use we had, basically, and I don't have any clue what it was, but.
It's on the city property.
It's built on the city property up there, but, I mean, if you, if that's what the council wanted to do, all you'd, because they'd have to agree to accept it. But we could easily give it to them with some provision that we retain the right to hold city elections there, and.
If we give it to, if we give it to them, can they then change the use of it, though?
Give it to them, it's theirs. But, you know, I don't know what else they'd use it for.
So, everything presently in there now is county operation?
That's, we don't do anything in it as.
Except carry, pay tax on it.
Well, we're exempt from taxes, primarily. Paying, we pay the insurance, and then now this has arisen as to whether this is maintenance and repair, and I, and I'll be honest with you, it's sort of in a gray area. I mean, you know, I think if the roof blew off, that would pretty be, pretty obvious that was a little past maintenance and repair, but there's some question about whether we're obligated to spend this $8,000 or not, or whether they're obligated to. And if you just gave it to them and reserved the right, then that wouldn't be an issue anymore. There may be some negatives to it, I guess, but you wouldn't want to do anything but give them the footprint of the building and probably the parking area up there. And I'm sure we'd probably maintain the parking area too, Tim? And we probably, do we mow it and all that stuff? Okay.
Is the air completely out, or they just want to leave?
I don't know, Johnny. He had repaired it over and over.
I think it's 23 years old. And it's.
Well, surely they got more than that one unit in there, that's the three.
There's three units. I think he said there's three units in that entire building, but this particular one is for the upstairs.
So they have been paying to have it, you know, unit repaired? Well, I guess they need to have it replaced then too, wouldn't you think?
Well, the wording in that contract is they're responsible for the upkeep and maintenance, and that's what Rocky's saying, the gray area is.
Well, actually, as we looked at the contract, I don't have it in front of me right now, I think Andy and I both thought that if you looked at that contract, that neither one of us was our first reaction. This is their job, I think, both of us. Don't you agree with that, Andy? That this would fall into something that we should do under the contract, which, the contract's not binding anymore. But the question then became, why, why do we need the building at all if we're not using it at all? And because if there's repairs starting to happen, they're gonna continue to happen.
Shows an asset on our books and.
Yes.
How much is it valued at? That's a pretty good sized building, but.
It's a good building, yeah.
My only concern would be is, well, if they come in here two years later and totally change the use of the building, then we have no control. That's my only reservation about that, and I don't think it'd be anything detrimental before paying, but I just, you know, it's been used for pretty much same thing for several years, and.
Well, everything in it's a county operation. They'd have to put it somewhere. I mean, if either that or just cancel all of them entirely, and I don't think.
Then they move the thing from up here at the Beast and Gap down there. Flip-flop then.
I don't think they have any lunches up at the other place anymore.
It's nutrition and everything down there.
They moved it.
They moved the nutrition thing down there and put the clothes closet.
They had a, some kind of indigent type agency in the basement, and they just swapped.
Casa or something?
Yeah.
And they flip-flop them on Beast and Gap apartments, so.
Alson, just giving the county a building, I'd recommend, and I think Rocky would agree, that contract be redone.
Well, I think that's the least we gotta do, is restructure the contract, and like I say, they got three units, so here's one. When's the next one, and then the next one gonna come up?
Might do a little more studying on it.
Well, I think the only push, I think we got plenty of time on some sort of agreement. I think the only push at this point is.
It's getting warm weather.
It's getting, it's fixing to get hot. And let me speak from personal experience, old folks don't like heat.
Well, if we're, and I don't doubt that these are good quotes, but I think we would need to be diligent. If we're gonna have to buy units, we need.
You know, we need to get our own quote.
We need three bids submitted, and these are basically good quotes, but if we're gonna have to pay for it, I think we gotta bid it out. That right, lawyer?
No, you don't have to bid it out, but I would, I would think that we would want to, to get our own quotes. I think the initial question you wanna answer is, are we gonna replace that unit and then go negotiate with them? Or are we gonna take the position? And I think you can do the one you want to, but if we're, if we make, take the position that we're going to replace that unit, then I think it's incumbent on us to decide who to use and what's a fair price, et cetera.
I'd like to have the other two checked, see what their prognosis is too. I mean, if we're looking at a year or two down the road, another one, and, or, you know, are they all the same age? Because if they are, we know they're all gonna wear out about the same time, so.
Well, we could go ahead and do this one and redo the contract and spell out what's gonna happen the next time this comes up, because you know if they got three, the other two's gonna be shortly behind. And there may be some other things in there too that, that the contract, I think we could be on a good faith standpoint, and I think we can get it cheaper than this price that we've got. Feel fairly confident about that.
Well, I mean, if the contract's not been renegotiated, you know, I think now's time to do that.
Well, if y'all want me to, I'll go ahead and redraft and make some changes to that contract, and then maybe by the next meeting, we could present something to them. Y'all could think about whether or not you wanna go ahead and, or maybe we go ahead and get some prices and then decide whether or not to replace it, and if you're gonna replace it, then say, we're gonna replace it, but here's the next contract that we need to enter into.
I think we get prices on this one, and a good check on the other two, see if there's other, any other maintenance issues that were pending, and then that gives us a little bit of.
Well, my plan on redoing it was to make it where it's pretty darn clear that it didn't matter.
Right. So worst-case scenario, we'd replace this unit, and then they'd have to replace anything other if we redo this contract, right? Or we give them the building and.
At what it costs to fix the air conditioner?
Right.
What does a normal commercial lease include when, when you're talking about air conditioning and heat?
Usually, major things such as the heating and air, the roof and the walls are maintained by the lessor, and then the lessy maintains the interior, and, I mean, that's not a hard and fast rule, there's a lot of different associations that go on with that, but generally speaking, major, major structural items are maintained by the landlord, and the interior and things of that nature are maintained by the tenant.
All right, we'll get prices, and you work on the contract, and then we'll decide something by next council meeting.
Get it, next two weeks. All right, got activities permit. Daughters of the American Revolution Patriotic Concert at the Rotary Pavilion on Friday, June the 30th, from 5 until 9 p.m. Randy, you okay with that? Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, that gets all of our agenda items. Mayor, you got anything?
Couple of things. Veterans Day Parade, we finally settled on a date and time that military band can be here. We're hoping that we can get a flyover from some of the military, so we've set it for Friday at 4 p.m. Had conflicts with the VFW and the Marines on Saturday, so this looks like our best.
What is that date, Mayor?
What's the date?
It's November the 10th.
November 10th.
November 10th. The other thing I wanted to mention, and Rocky and I have talked about it a good bit, before I leave this place, there's two things that I'd like to get done, if at all possible. And one of them is to get rid of that MAPCO station. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm tired of waiting on them. I checked the tax records as to what they were appraised for. I talked to a local appraiser to give me what he considered the value of it to be, based on property that he had bought recently. And it appears that our price that we've given them is above market price. I would like to have the okay to go ahead and get a certified appraiser, an out-of-town appraiser, to come in and appraise that property, to see if it's feasible to go through condemnation Rocky can tell us how mu, what that amounts to, but.
Well, one of the first things you're required to do if you decide to condemn property is to present the landowner with an appraisal. And there's people that pretty much specialize in those kinds of appraisals, and I would, getting the appraisal does not obligate you to condemn the property, it doesn't obligate you to do anything. You're gonna spend probably $2,500 to $3,000 getting the appraisal. But I would recommend that you, if that's a thought that you wanna have, is that start the process, get the property appraised, and then notify them that that's being considered. It may have one of two effects. It either may, we may decide we're gonna condemn it, or they may decide that they wanna get off their rear and get the deal that we already made done. Although they never did reduce that deal to writing, so we don't have anything enforceable at this point in time. But I, that would just be a first step, and then, I guess, and the only other thing would declare portions around it Mexico and just build us a wall around it.
Let them pay for it.
Well, I, I was under the impression that we had a verbal agreement.
We had a verbal agreement, but a verbal agreement on this.
I understand.
On land isn't enforceable. We do. We have one, and we have drafts, and we've sent it back three or four times with changes that we wanted in the drafts, and then at some point during that process, the ownership of MAPCO changed.
Changed, that's right.
And the people that we were dealing with have been deported or disappeared or something, and they're gone.
Are gone and hiding.
They're hiding, yeah, whatever.
Regardless, can we not open a dialogue with the people that?
We've been trying. We have been trying for, what, since January, to find somebody down there that'll talk to us. We've asked Jimmy Roach, who put us in with the people and was involved in the sale, we've asked him initially, and then he was involved with the sale between the businesses, as I understand it. We've asked him to talk to the people he knows there and get us someone to talk to, and the only response we've ever had, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Tamara, is basically, we may get around to it at some point, but at this point, we're too busy doing the other things it takes to, to put this overall deal together. So we have tried very hard to talk to them and to open up some dialogue with them, but we just can't get anybody to talk to us.
I think the first thing was said was wait till after the first of the year, I believe, and then it.
They wanted to wait until the closing of the deal and then reevaluate, and then we checked back with them once we got notification that it had been, that the deal had been closed, and then they wanted to wait some more, and then we've checked back with them again and gotten a new contact and have reached out to that person who has responded, but again, responded with, well, I need to get with the folks at the new company and let you know. So it's been a lot of us reaching out to them and them putting us on.
Well, I would like to say at very least, put a little pressure on it.
But it's condemnation, is the avenue that we need to take right now, or do we need to let Tamara go ahead with what?
Well, we're, we're not taking it right now. What, what I'm suggesting is, is if everybody's committed to, to get rid of, getting rid of that hyssore that's down there next to the park, that you go ahead and you're not beginning the process of condemnation, what you're doing is doing what you would have to do, and it also gives you a pretty good idea, I mean, let's, if you're looking at what the mayor's been told by a realtor here in town and what the tax assessor shows, of course, that's usually low for commercial property, it may be that you can condemn it and get it for less money, and, but you're not committing to do anything. And then I think when you, when they understand that we're gonna make, that we're gonna continue down this path, whether or without their cooperation, then you have the opportunity, it may, they may deem it more beneficial to reopen this conversation than they are at this point, because at this point, they, they just truly, they just don't wanna mess with us at this point, it's just not important to them. And so, I, that, my suggestion is that you authorize the employment of the appraiser, see what it's worth, and then at that point, hopefully, they'll, even seeing the newspaper article, will get their attention, and we'll start having some dialogue with them again.
And too, you don't know what they really got on their mind, but I know when we first started talking with them, they were trying to find a, someone that would buy that station, that would continue to buy fuel from them. And that's when we got involved in it, because we knew if it changed hands, it'd just make it that much harder to handle, so.
Just the motion and second, there, Mayor.
My second it.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, the one other thing that I'd like to get a.
You're on a roll.
And I don't know whether I will or not, but it's, it's the old hospital, and we are, we're still working with ADM and EPA. ADM is in the process of doing the second phase. EPA has to take the things that they find in the second phase and run them through their lab and do lab work and all this kind of stuff, so it's a long, drawn-out process. But hopefully, if maintain cooperation between ADM, EPA, and HUD, which right now's kind of backing it, we stand a good chance of getting it done, but it may be three or four years down the road. I'd love to get that at least started before I leave office.
We gonna spray that or anything? It's looking pretty ragged right now.
We sprayed it one time, we didn't.
We have to spray it.
Yeah, it needs it. At what point are we gonna have to fence that, Mayor?
When, when EPA agrees that it's a brownfield site and agrees to start sharing the expense, they won't, they'll tell us verbally what they're gonna do, but they won't actually do anything until it becomes our property. And once it becomes our property, we're gonna have to fence it. I mean, I don't see any way around.
We do that, I'd like to get us coordinated with Parks and Rec and everybody else, and let's buy a fence to put around that that we can take down and use somewhere else, 'cause I don't see us buying stuff twice, and, and we gonna fence it, we need to do it good, and get some stuff that we can use somewhere else, like the soccer fields that need replacing or some of those other places.
Is there any indication on how long it will take for that Phase Two to get started, or?
It's started, but it'll be the end of the year before it's done. And a lot of that depends on EPA. I mean, ADM will be finished before then, but with the EPA will get through with their part, we don't know.
That's one we don't wanna condemn without the government help, just 'cause we can't afford to clean that thing up without.
Costs too much to take that down.
Right.
I will say this.
It's gonna make a nice lot one of these days that can be developed for something right, right there in the middle of town.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Mayor? All right. Again, like to say, appreciate everybody coming out today. Anybody in the audience like to address the council?
I'd recognize Mr. Mike Shari back there.
Yeah, I started to say, it's good to have our new Improvement Authority Director.
You gotta speak?
Next time.
All the power's on, right?
I would also like to say it's good to see three, I know there's three Leadership de Cab students here today. This is part of their curriculum, actually four. We have Bradley here every, every council meeting, but this is part of the Leadership de Cab, and Maury's here, that's five, so if I keep looking, we might have, have more. But that's part of the leadership requirement to attend a, some type of a city function, council meeting. You know anybody that would like to go through Leadership de Cab? Applications are being accepted till June the 1st, so. Anybody in the audience wanna address us? If not?
Before we adjourn, I'd like to say I appreciate the nearly ten long years of service we got out of Tim Harris, he's leaving us this week, and I wish him luck in his new job as the Main Street Director, so. Tim's done a great job for us as a city employee, and if he's as dedicated to his new job as he was at Old and Main Street, probably fixing to take off.
Yeah, I think Main Street will.
I think they made an excellent choice.
See some leaps and bounds.
No further bids, I'd like to motion with adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.